At this time, I'd like to call to regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for December 16, 2014, 5:00 PM to order. First items on the agenda is your consent agenda items.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
I'll second. We've got a motion and a second to consent, approved the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. I know the mileage reimbursement rate is going from fifty-six to fifty-seven point five, or fifty-seven and a half cents a mile effective January 1st. My guess with our gas rates dropping, there'll be an amended one coming out fairly soon on that, because I have seen it when it's went the other way, but not this way. But my guess is we'll see something for IRS somewhere down the road change in that amount. But at this point, it went up twenty and a half.
Yeah, Mr. President, it's one of those things that we, you know, they do the analysis probably back in August.
Exactly.
And it's going down, so, you know, a consideration might be just to leave it where it's at rather than go up and have to come back down again.
And sometimes it's a payback for when we, when it was the opposite, when gas went way up and the rates were really low.
Yeah, that's true. So, just up to the council if they want to do that.
Yep. I'm not willing to change until we get an amended IRS rate, if they change, drop it down, back down again at some point. So, if they don't, they don't.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 2A, consider motion approving issuance of a gravel pit license for M&amp;R paving and excavating.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 2B, consider motion approving issuance of bed and breakfast licenses for the period beginning January 1st, 2015, and ending December 31st, 2015.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Great places.
Thank you. No more discussion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 2C, consider motion approving issuance of a temporary on sale liquor license for the New Ulm Area Catholic Schools Incorporated.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, and that's for Saturday, January 31st, 2015. Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 3A, report from the city engineer regarding the proposed 2015 capital improvement project. Mr. Kalik.
Thank you, Mr. President. As noted on my request for council action form, I've delivered to the city council the recommended improvements for the 2015 capital improvement program. The bulk of the improvements that are recommended are devoted to reconstruction of deficient roadways and utility segments, as I've noted. And then at the bottom of the request for council action form, the estimated cost of the capital improvement plan is approximately 4.7 million with an estimated bonding need of just under 2.8 million. Mr. Stadheim will put up the map of the recommended improvements as we go along. I guess I'd move into the report, and probably the easiest thing would be to start on Section 7, which is on page 15, and we could go through each location, and I could give a little bit of a description of the scope of the improvements. So, beginning on page 15, with the 2015 utility street and alley project, we're looking at Bridge Street from 20th South Street to Cottonwood Street. This segment has a water main, large diameter water main, and sanitary sewer main from 1954, which makes it 60 years old. There's a history of breakage and corrosion of the water main, and we've had maintenance issues with the sanitary sewer for many years, and the roadway itself is rated at a three out of 100, so we'd like to get in there and reconstruct that segment. The next one is Front Street from Third North to Eighth North, again, water main, sanitary sewer main, roadway reconstruction. We've got a, this is probably one of the oldest segments of utilities in the city. I think we've got a water main, four inch diameter from 1917. Now, currently, you can't construct anything less than six inch, and it certainly needs to be replaced, as well as sanitary sewer, which has been an issue for several years. The roadway itself is degraded and needs to be reconstructed. We're going to look at extending water, or excuse me, the sidewalk on the west side from Fifth North, hopefully to Eighth. We've got to work through some bridge abutments, and we'll bring that, if the city council approves this plan, we'll bring that back with a completed plan set and go over that with you again. The third area is Payne Street from 11th North to 12th North. You've got a very bad segment of sanitary sewer in that segment from 1950, as well as a six inch water main from 1951 we'd like to replace, and then we'll redo the pavement section itself as well. Number four is Allison Avenue, Birchwood, Ryan Road, and Sarah Hills. First, this is a new subdivision, or a newer subdivision, that's been a gravel segment for quite some time. I think 2005 was when it was graded, so it's probably time to get in there and do the roadway improvements with curb and gutter pavement and sidewalk. The same with the next, number five, Henley Drive, Maplewood Drive, and Sarah Hills. Second, this was originally graded and gravelled in 2007. All the homes are constructed for the most part, so we'd like to get in there and do the roadway, concrete sidewalk improvements. Number six is Valley Street from 12th South to 16th South. This, we just did the segment from 7th to 12th a few years ago, and this would be reconstruction of the existing water main, which has a history of breakage, and also reconstructing of the existing roadway surface. More just the surface, not quite such a deep subcut as the previous segment. This was a better segment in terms of subgrade, so I think we can get by with surface reconstruction and water main there. The sanitary sewer is a newer segment. Seven is Milford Street Storm Sewer Outfall. That was the segment, or the area that was damaged during the June 20th or thereabouts rainfall event. We're going to replace some outfall structures and energy dissipation devices, and that actually is going to be paid for by some FEMA funding. Number eight, nine, 10, 11 are three alleys that are in, or excuse me, four alleys that are in need of reconstruction. We've got 73 South, 78 South, 101 South, and 152 South. All are in the very low end of our pavement management rating system. Number 12, we've got miscellaneous sanitary sewer main repairs at three locations, German Park, 12th South Street, and South German Street. During the last year or so, or almost two years, the Public Utilities Commission has been televising sanitary sewer mains, and these are some of the repair locations that we've discovered during that process, so we'd like to get in there and do some point repairs. The next one is Center Street from Broadway to Minnesota. It's right over here in front of the museum. It's only one block segment. There's some selective replacement of concrete curb and gutter. For some reason, we've had a lot of curb and gutter fail in that location, so we'd just like to take that out and put it back in. The last one for the USA project is sidewalk improvements. The city council ordered in two locations recently. One of them was constructed privately, and we'd like to go in next summer and finish up the second location. So, that's the USA project, estimated cost of about 3.5 million. Then we move into the 2015 MSA improvement project, which basically is just bridge deck repairs and a few things on the 20th South Street Bridge over the Minnesota River. We had started that project last year, but it didn't, we didn't get it bid out, so we're estimating about 660,000 for that particular project, and Nikla County has agreed to fund that with us 50/50. The next one is the 2015 surface reconstruction project by city forces. Basically, the city, the street department takes 12 blocks, approximately 12 blocks every year, removes the pavement, reshapes the existing gravel, and paves with four inches of determinate surface. This year, we're looking at Front Street, seven blocks from 12th to 19th North. That segment is in very poor condition, so we'd like to get in there and restore that surface. And then on First North Street from State to Garden, we've got five blocks that are, have an older resurfacing, or an older surface that needs to be redone. So, the bottom of page 30, or no, excuse me, the bottom of page 15, we've got a tabulation of the total cost in the surface reconstruction, it's about 542,000, so that gives us that 4.7 million estimated cost. Prior to that, on page 14, that's a summation of the Section 6, which is Estimated Special Assessments Amounts. And we're, I'm estimating that we're going to assess just over 1 million, or approximately 20 percent of that 4.7 million. Then you probably can get to page 5. That has a summation of the funding sources and projected bonding need. We show approximately 2 million summation of estimated funding between our sources, some of which are MSA funding, FEMA funding, some from the PUC, 330,000 from Nikla County. Subtract that from the projected estimated cost, and we come up with about a $2.8 million bond issue, which is pretty much in the ballpark where we've been the last few years, and maybe a little less. So, with that, that's kind of a quick summation. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments, but if the council approves that, we'll come back with setting public hearing dates for these projects.
I just have one comment, Mr. Chair. On the Payne Street, 11th to 12th, that's also where we had some flooding issues, and from that, obviously, the 100-year storm. I know we can't, I know you can't say that that'll fix it, but will this dramatically improve that area?
Mr. President, actually, the flooding occurred one block north of there. This segment is not really connected to that particular segment. It is downstream, probably about eight or 10 blocks, so it won't do anything to improve the area north of that. But as part of the follow-up to that particular storm, the public utilities concentrated on televising the sanitary mains in that area, and this was one that we found was in really poor condition. But again, it really did not contribute to that flooding, and it is south of that particular segment. If you look at the piping in there, it's not even connected at that location, so, but it does need to be done.
So, when would that be on the proposed, I mean, is that in the future to fix that particular area where the sewer pipes are smaller than they are on Front, than they are on Garden Street?
Well, we have done some plugging of the cross connection up on 13th, is it 14th?
14th North and Garden.
14th, so we plug that particular lead, but it's actually of adequate size. We're going to study it further, but we're not going to be doing anything this coming summer, at least I'm not recommending that, so. It really is more of a storm sewer issue than a sanitary sewer issue, so, again, when you have a 200-year rainstorm, things happen.
I just want to ask the question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt the proposed 2015 capital improvement program. Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 4A, thank you. Item 4A, consider motion approving contract for city attorney legal services with Near Garden and Hipper and LTD, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract for the city of New Ulm.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 4B, consider resolution adopting the final 2015 budget of the city of New Ulm totaling 20,891,116 dollars, $169,000, with a total property tax levy of 6,596,406 dollars, and the city of New Ulm net property tax levy of 6,439,406 dollars.
So moved.
Yes, resolution.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second.
We've got a motion, offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the 19, or 2015 budget. Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor, up, finance director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4C, consider motion approving the change order number two to Minicon Park Water Access Site Improvement Project extending completion date.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just a weather-related issue, so not a lot we can do about it.
No more discussion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 5A, consider resolution designating annual community celebration as community events for the year 2015.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading. However, there's, you're missing one of our wonderful festivals. We're missing Herman Fest in September.
I was going to ask that, too.
Unless there's a reason it was omitted.
It's Herman Fest, not Herman Fest, Hermann Fest.
Oh.
Reckons the Deutsch.
I'm making a note.
Okay.
Was it just omitted? Anybody know?
Probably.
Okay.
Somewhat fairly new and...
That's only third year, or will be the third year.
Yeah.
Okay, any more, well, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any more discussion?
The motion did include Herman Fest, right?
I would assume.
I just want to verify.
Yeah, right. Add Herman Fest.
It says community events, so any that would ever come up, too, I guess.
Well, we have to specifically identify.
We have to specify.
That's a requirement to the law, yeah.
All right. Okay, no more discussion. Finance director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5B, consider motion approving the general wage adjustments for non-unionized full-time employees, and authorize the city manager to make adjustments to the part-time hourly rate classification as needed.
I'll move that, I'll make the motion.
I would second it, but I...
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I think, I brought up almost every year, the city manager's authority to make adjustments to the part-time hourly rate classifications, but we never use it. I mean, from what I recall, the last couple of years, I've said, "Bring it back to the council if you're, just tell us," but it sounds like you've never had to do that, so I just don't think that that needs to be in there. I think if there was a reason you could, the city manager could bring it to us and say, "Exposition needs, we can't get anybody to apply, we need to raise the salary." I just, I'm going to vote no on it if that stays in there. I just don't think that should be in there, I think.
Well, this is the, this is the part-time, kind of like part-time, full-time, and also part-time seasonal, so, you know...
Right. You talked, I think in the past about lifeguards and...
Yeah, but unless, unless we don't have any problem filling them, we don't come back.
Right.
We have, by the current rate that we're using, we're not having any trouble filling those positions.
Right.
And so, and that's not coming back to give them more than, than what, like, everybody else got. See, they, you know, they received a 1.25 percent increase.
Yeah.
But we are not having any trouble filling specific positions that we need more.
Then why is it in the motion? I don't think it needs to be here.
I think it's just general information for the public. I mean, they're the people, you know, we work for the public.
We do, but what this does is allow the city manager to, on his own, to make adjustments to an hourly salary rate without any input from the council, and I don't think that's appropriate. I think that's a decision we as a, it's nothing against Mr. Gramm, it's just, I think that's a council decision, not, not a city manager decision alone, in my opinion.
It's very easy to put on the agenda in the April area when we do this.
Exactly.
It just was...
It's on here every year, but every year, you know, you do say, "I don't make any changes," so I'm like, "Why is it always in here?"
Roger, would that be difficult to make the change?
To change what, Counselor?
To make it part of the annually, as part of the overall program, rather than just having it as, as...
Is objecting to number two, not number one.
Suggested.
Right.
I guess I'm a little confused, because, number one, we do make the minor, like, one and a quarter percent adjustment, like, cost of living. We do make that change.
Right.
And that, in the past, that was just authorized, or given authorization to the city manager to make that change. If you don't want me to make that, then take that out.
No, I, we're making the decision to vote on that tonight, but what I remember you telling me in the past, and maybe I'm wrong, is that if, for example, if we didn't get enough lifeguards to apply, that you would then have the authority to change the hourly salary from 7.25 to $9 an hour to get more people to apply. That's the part that I'm having the problem with.
Yeah, that, we haven't been doing, because we aren't having a problem filling the positions.
Correct, then, then that doesn't need to be in the motion.
I don't know about this spring, you know. If you don't want it in the motion, it's your motion.
Well...
It's just taking the workload off of you, and we're just reacting to market forces.
Correct. I just personally think that that's a council decision, not a city manager decision. That's just my opinion.
And, you know, I guess all I'm saying is earlier city councils that determining part-time wages for a lifeguard is, for somebody that works for 10 weeks, is small enough detail that they didn't want to be involved in it.
Well, and just speaking for myself, looking back to when we initially made this decision, I mean, if, it, the seasonal, these seasonal part-time positions come up quickly and have to be filled quickly, and so, it just felt like it was a small enough item in something that needed quick, quick action, so we should allow the city manager to do it, but if we don't have to do it again...
That's just my, my opinion, but I...
Well, maybe we should look at it next year, and see what happens this year. And, well, and I'm saying that because I believe that this might be the year when you're going to have to raise salaries, because the unemployment rate is dropping, and there's, I know a lot of employers in town are having trouble filling positions, so, I, can we, city manager, expect a timely report if any of these adjustments do have to be made?
We can do that, sure.
And that has been the request the last couple of years, that he was supposed to, Mr. Gramm should report to us if a change had to be made.
And, and what I'm hearing...
He hasn't had to do it, so I'm like, why?
It hasn't been made for a while. The last one I remember probably goes back about four-plus years, and it was in relation to the lifeguarding out at the Flandre Park. Their pay is higher per hour than our pay is per hour, and all the lifeguards...
Went there.
...positioned down to Flandre Park, and we were, we were really hurting. We didn't, we didn't have, and that's about the last time I remember that we've ever had to even do a market adjustment.
Sure.
But it's been a while.
Well, just so I'm clear on this, then, if you delete number two, there won't be any adjustment to the part-time, full-time rates from 2014?
No.
No.
It'll be, if any, if there's going to be an adjustment, that it'd be brought back to the city council for approval.
But you, it's not going to be 2 percent, it's not going to be one and a quarter, it's not going to be anything unless the council approves it.
Right.
Okay.
The 2014 was done back in May of 2014, okay? So, we will look at this again in May of 2015. If the council wants to make that decision, that's fine.
Right now, the motion is to approve it as it stands, but...
Right now, the motion is...
You may do that. Right. The motion right now stands, just to prove what's written here.
Right.
So, unless somebody changes the motion, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope.
No.
Finance director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
No.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5C, consider resolution approving the hardship deferral for the 2015 installment due to, uh, due of $429.01 for 2013 utility street and alley improvements.
So moved. Or I will offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving hardship denial, hardship deferral.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye. Oops, sorry. Finance director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5D, consider resolution accept donations offered to the park and rec department.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any discussion?
Well, I just think we should take special note of the $10,000 donation to the German Park Outdoor Performing Arts Center Amphitheater Replacement Project. I think that's...
I think all of them were...
Yeah, actually, all of them, I agree.
Run through all of them?
Go ahead, Ruth Ann, you're going.
Okay, we, all right, and then there's the Buck Thorn Removal Challenge Contest, $1,200 cash from Alina Health System Healthy Activity Grant Program, and then Minicon Park Paved Walkway, $2,485 from M&amp;R Paving, in-kind donation of pavement under the gravel walkway between the shelter and the upper parking lot, and the Dog Park Paved Parking Lot, $5,000 from M&amp;R Paving and Excavating, and in-kind donation of pavement into the gravel parking lot. Just really appreciate all of these wonderful donations, one beautiful projects. Many thanks.
So, the mayor be busy again.
Yes, he is busy.
We'll be done.
All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5E, consider motion to instruct the city attorney to draft a lease agreement between the city of New Ulm and the keepers of De Prairie Incorporated Keating House property.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 5F, consider motion authorizing the city manager to acquire the identified scheduled replacement equipment for year 2015.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? They're all listed here, what's going to be replaced.
Yeah, wow, yeah. New Zamboni.
Yep. Okay, no more discussion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse nope, motion carries. Item 5G, consider resolution authorizing the NAR on to, of New Ulm, a colorful stripes, a decorative cloth on Minnesota Street in observance of the season of foshing.
I'll offer that resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We've got a, we've got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Got to approve the regs.
Oh, you got it.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a resolution. Finance director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5H, consider motion authorize lease agreement between the city of New Ulm and Lutheran Social Services of Minnesota for the, using a portion of the community center.
Well, I, I know this has been a well-reported piece of legislation, I guess. I know that the Park and Rec Commission visited this issue and was unable to come to a resolution. I know we've gotten a lot of discussion and input in the community over this, and just to get the matter on the table, I would move that we authorize the city manager to sign the lease agreement for the community center at a rate of $50 per day, which would be the lease agreement for the community center at a rate of $50 per day, which would be a reduction from the $88 per day that is being proposed. I know it isn't everything that they've asked for, but I think it's a compromise number that I think we can live with.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion and a second to change the rate to $50. Any more discussion?
I want to tackle this issue a little bit, too, and we subsidize a lot of different things in our community, and, you know, the municipal band and Concord Singers, and this is a service that provides it to our seniors and our citizens. Sometimes it's the only contact that our seniors have with people delivering meals. I consider it almost what we'd call an essential service in our community. Now, I know Lutheran Social Services is a private nonprofit, and I'm fine with this $50, that's why I seconded the motion. I would like, however, this to be a one-year lease, and I'd like to maybe, you know, have LSS, and I know they're here tonight, maybe talk about if they're willing to let us look at their books next year as well, to make sure that that's is fair. I know they're right now saying that that current fee is not going to work for them. But I do consider this, what I, you know, and I've delivered meals, many of us here have delivered meals, I know how important this is for our seniors, and we have a lot of seniors in our community. And according to our graphs that we were looking at, we provide even more meals than most cities our size, because we do have a lot of seniors living in our town. So that's kind of my take on this issue, but I know I would want something in there that we take a look at this rate again next year, that this is a one-year rate, but let's take a look at it again next year based on where, how well they're doing financially. Did they find any more grants? Did they get any other type of revenue coming in? And I'm pretty willing that they'd be willing to do that, I don't know.
I think the one year is good, because it gives you that year for them to look at it and for the city to look at it.
Yeah.
And then if, beyond the next year, if you'd like to go to a three-year or a five-year, you know, I think that would be very much in order.
I like that three or, you know, three or five-year idea, too.
I think that when you have something like this, I think a three-year gives you a better chance to take a look at what's really going on, and if there are greater swings that they can be adjusted at that time, rather than waiting for five years, which could be penalizing in some situations.
Now, our LSS people are here, and do they want to speak about this at all? Is that... State your name and address for the record, please.
Sarah Anderson with Lutheran Social Service. I actually reside just north of Wyndham, Minnesota, but I'm the regional supervisor for the senior nutrition program. I've been with LSS for 10 years and in this position since 2007, since we took over the senior nutrition program from Nutrition Services, Inc. And thank you for having us as part of your agenda. I think the $50 is certainly very generous on the city's part and something we can definitely work with, and certainly, I think we would be very open to absolutely looking at this again next year and maybe earlier in the year to avoid weather and mishaps and that kind of thing, and certainly would be open to more like a three-year lease, so we're not constantly revisiting this every year.
If we said, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if we said something to the effect that in, like, November next of 2015, if you could set up a meeting with our city manager and bring your books and take a look at where things are at and expenses, or maybe Mr. Schmitz is involved, I don't know where that would go, and then that report then could come to us in the council meeting, probably the early part of December?
Absolutely.
Kind of makes sense? Where you're at financially, were you able to get some better grants? Because I know the grants have dried up, is my understanding, are they pretty tough?
I think it's the sequester.
The sequester stuff that happened last year.
Right, my supervisor, Andrea Lingal, can speak to that a little bit more.
Hi, I'm Andrea Lingal, also with Lutheran Social Service and the senior nutrition program. Like Sarah Anderson, I've been on board since 2007 with the program as well. As far as grants go and such, our program was struck with, I guess you would say struck with funding cuts due to the federal sequester by the $268,000. Something that we did talk with the Park and Rec Commission as well was, the fact that that had on our program was that we will see other communities in your area that have been affected by either a total closure of the site or a reduction in service. So whether that mean their congregate dining disappeared, maybe their congregate dining and their Meals on Wheels are no longer available to them in their community because of those cuts. So that, we don't foresee that happening again in the near future, hopefully, fingers crossed. However, when things like that happen, we do look for support from, of course, other grants and also the communities that we serve in. So this isn't something that we're only doing with New Ulm by any means. We're looking at where we're at everywhere and looking for who's willing to support the program, and, like you said, serving the seniors within your community, keeping them at home for as long as possible, as safely as possible, and help them continue to be taxpayers for your community as well.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question for maybe Tom Schmitz. With, if we do this reduction, do you see any other groups coming in and saying they want a reduction, or do you think, you know, that this will be an isolated request?
Excuse me, President Schmitz, Counselor Fisher, and Counselor, I, you know, I couldn't, I don't have an answer for that. I'm not quite certain what the other organizations in town would consider this as. It could very well be that this particular situation is unique. I don't know what the other dozens of groups that frequent park and rec facilities.
Have you had any requests like this before in the past?
Occasionally, not very often, but occasionally.
I would, Mr. President and City Councilors, I would anticipate that there would be somebody out there saying, "Well, I am a organization and I am as deserved as Lutheran Social Services." But I think you can, unless they're providing meals, doing the same sort of thing, I think the city council can stand behind us and say, "This is a community thing for our senior citizens, and although you may be a very deserved entity, you're not, the impetus isn't the same." There's going to be nobody else out there doing the same thing that Lutheran Social Services is doing. There's no organizations in the community that do this. That's a given.
And this keeps seniors in their homes, which, if they're not in their homes, you know, they could end up with all of us as taxpayers paying for their services, so I, I mean, we can argue that a lot, and I just think that this is a very unique, special service for our seniors.
Well, and just speaking for myself, I think this provides a lifeline to a lot of people. And, well, and the other thought that I have is, we build these buildings to be used, and then this senior dining program gets people into a city building so that people can take advantage of that beautiful space.
And they run a good show there, they just do an outstanding job. That director there is excellent.
Go ahead.
Would I be able to add on to that? You know, as far as our service goes, just in case you're unaware, how our program works, it's anyone age six-year-old or can take advantage of our program. The only thing that makes someone eligible is their age, it's not income-based. What we do is, we serve one hot nutritious meal a day, so that means they get three ounces of edible protein, a cup of fruit and/or vegetable. Every meal comes with a piece of bread, fresh milk, they also get dessert with that. So it's a well-balanced meal, it's not your, I know I can always speak for my grandpa, who was, "Yeah, I've got supper covered, I've got a cookie and coffee, we're good." Breakfast, toast and coffee, you know, whatever you can scramble up at the local cafe for a lunch. So this is a well-balanced meal, and how it works is, as long as they are 60, they can take advantage of our program and receive a meal for a suggested donation of $4 or whatever they can afford. So if they're not able to afford the $4, we still serve them a meal. I would say that's what makes us special. We don't turn away anybody because of inability to pay. I can tell you here in New Ulm, the average donation for a home-delivered meal is around $2.50. What that number tells us is that we are hitting people who are low-income, who are struggling. We always say our concerns are, if someone is not able to afford to pay for meals, what else aren't they able to afford? Are they able to heat their homes during these cold winters? Are they able to pay for their prescription drugs? If they're having to choose between a meal and paying for their prescriptions, and then they're just opting to pay for their prescriptions, not having that healthy diet mixed in with their, sends them right to the hospital. I mean, there's malnutrition that happens that sends them into the hospital. A year's worth of meals from us is actually cheaper than an average day in the hospital for an older adult due to malnutrition. So those are just some statistics for you that you can take and see where, kind of what, like I said, what makes us special and the fact of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? I guess in my opinion, I agree with Ruth Ann and the $50 and everything, and to be honest, I would even accept it a lot lower than that, because if you go through the rates that are charged in other communities, I think we were on the higher side anyway, and that's just another reason that we should get it down into the ballpark where it probably needs to be, so I'll definitely support it. So, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the $50, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're going to go with a closed session and discuss the performance evaluation of the city manager, and then I guess we...
Go ahead and read that whole thing there.
The bottom one, or this?
This one right here.
Okay. The city of New Ulm City Council will go to a closed session to evaluate the performance of the city manager, Brian Grumman, according to Minnesota statute 13D dash, or 13D.105,